1415 budget, Dr. Radic.
Thank you. As the Budget Committee is aware, you received the Superintendent's Budget Message on April the 22nd and heard several recommendations relative to investing approximately $9.9 million into our educational programs. So this evening, we're not going to review that information with you unless you have specific questions relative to those recommendations. What we'd like to do is highlight for the Budget Committee some of the major changes in the budget document for this year. And then we'd like to briefly visit with you regarding some proposed recommendations for the May Adjustment. Following that, we'll review the committee questions and responses to those questions that we've received, and there'll be some opportunity for committee discussion and information requests. So I think we'll begin right now with the major changes that would be highlighted in this proposed 2014-15 budget, and Michael Wolfe will make that presentation.
Great, thank you, Dr. Radic. I'm gonna hand out just a one-pager that's an overview of the funds, and then I'll go through some of the major changes in the funds listed. There's also handouts of this document on the table out in the hallway for those of you who'd like a copy. What I think you'll, tonight as the conversation begins to flow, you'll see some connection between the changes we've made in the budget, the proposed conversation, or the conversation around the proposed allocation of the May Adjustment. Did we run out?
Yep.
And also how we answered some of the questions that were brought up by committee members from the last meeting. Okay, does everybody have the overview of the funds document? Okay. As Paula said, the Superintendent's Budget Message delivered on April 22nd gave details on how the $9.9 million was allocated. And page 90 in the General Fund also provides a high-level summary of the changes. So if you wanted to go to one page and sort of capture what's happened since the 1314 budget, that'd be a good place. Another change that impacts the General Fund, and I will give you page numbers if you care to reference this later in the document, but generally what we're doing is we're moving the Risk Management Function or Unit out of the General Fund and into the Risk Management Fund. That's four FTE. That's the Manager, the Administrative Assistant Environmental Coordinator, and the Safety Officer. We're also moving some of the general liability premium, insurance premiums, out of the General Fund and into the Risk Management Fund as well. So that's an adjustment that we wanted to call out. It's also tied to moving four positions, so there's a zero-sum game in the General Fund FTE, moving four positions out of Special Revenue Fund, which is in our central stores, and into our purchasing function in the General Fund. And again, I referenced the pages that you can go to, and last time I looked, the numbers do add up, but you may find something different. And the reason that we're doing that is to really better align the FTE allocation with the budget and the tracking of the expenditures. And so it makes sense for us to move the Risk Management Function into the Risk Management Fund. The Purchasing Agents that we're moving out of central stores into the General Fund, that's reconciling a decision that was made years ago, and at the time, it was the right thing to do, but as time marches on, we've decided that it's better to have those general-funded positions in the purchasing unit, which is a General Fund Function. So you'll notice that shift of FTE when you look through those pages. And the Internal Service Funds, the Risk Management in particular, of course, we've already talked about the shift of the FTE, but I also wanted to make sure that that's one of the funds outside of the General Fund that carries a reserve, and there's a purpose for that reserve. It's based on actuarial studies, and each area is routinely audited to ensure the adequacy of funds and the amount of reserves there. In the past, great questions have come up about, well, you know, what constitutes a Risk Management Fund? As you know, we're self-insured, we have to keep an adequate reserve to deal with current and future claims that, from workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, and general liability as well. So that's a shift. You'll see that number, the fund number increased from 1314 to 1415. The Debt Service, PERS Debt Service Fund. This fund is for the retirement of the debt associated with the PERS pension bonds, serves as a buffer against any increase in PERS costs, addresses differences between estimated versus actual data used in the sale of bonds, and protects the district from potential legal settlement issues that could result from existing and future challenges to the PERS system. So the major increase attributable to the 1415 budget is the increase in principal and interest, and maintaining an adequate reserve to address the anticipated 1415 biennial PERS rate increase. We don't have a number or a projection at this particular point in time, but our history shows that each biennium, the rate does increase. In fact, the previous biennium, it was an 8% increase, would have been close to that this biennium had the PERS reforms not gone through the legislative session. And so an 8% increase on a $200 million payroll would be 16 million a year, just to give you a point of reference. And another risk factor is the potential modification or reversal of the PERS reforms resulting from the 2013-15 legislative session and the special session. The Special Revenue Fund's asset replacement, this fund was restructured to align to the district's priorities of positioning to invest in critical infrastructure systems such as technology, instructional materials, buses, vehicles, and equipment. And increases in technology and vehicles will be addressed in the 2014 May Adjustment Discussion that Paula referenced. And then the last fund that I wanted to call your attention to is the Capital Project Funds, and we have a new fund within that group, and it's the Special Capital Projects Fund. And this was created this year, 2014 budget, to address multi-year facility issues because a lot of our projects, in fact, most of our facilities' projects, don't end on June 30th and start on July 1st. I mean, that's our fiscal period, but our construction season, you know, starts as soon as school releases in June and goes through, in many cases, into September when school resumes. So this fund allows us to have the flexibility to carry those funds through construction seasons and accumulate a balance for the future. Any questions?
So this fund, is that for such as maintaining facilities, fields, those types of items that we haven't been able to do in the past?
So, and here's where we're going to get into almost two conversations at the same time, because the last sentence here is we will also establish a fund for deferred and preventative maintenance projects, and that will be part of the May Adjustment Conversation. So the way that I like to look at these funds, because the other fund that's in this area is the Bond Fund. Okay, so we're very clear that what that is to be spent on. The Special Capital Projects Fund is for all facilities, not just schools, but all facilities. And that would be enhancing or creating something that doesn't exist. So you're building something that doesn't exist. The Deferred and Preventative Maintenance Fund will be, if it already exists, but it doesn't work, or you need to replace it. So it'll be those two distinctions within the Capital Projects Fund. Okay, that's brief, but I wanted to just call your attention to some of the major changes within the fund structures. The Asset Replacement is something that we tried to be as transparent as possible and align it with the priorities. Last year, we talked about the infrastructure reports, and we talked about buses and vehicles and equipment and instructional materials and technology, and so we wanted to at least have a fund structure that resembled that conversation for the future. Any comments or questions? Chris?
Sorry. Chris?
My question, really, on all of these things, comes to what fills these funds? For example, Risk Management, moving four people out of General Fund and into Risk Management, so obviously, we have to pay them out of Risk Management. It reduces that fund. So does every year, some of the money that comes from the state just go off into that fund before it gets to the General Fund? How does it get refunded?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And so the Internal Services Fund is a fund that charges other funds, the General Fund, so it's through the associated payroll costs. So when we have a, when you look at your salary and wages and your APC, Associated Payroll Costs, that's where we're pulling payroll, we're adding payroll rates to cover workers' compensation, and also, you know, unemployment insurance and also general liability. But that's through all funds, so that's, if you're getting a paycheck in Salem Kaiser School District, whether it's in a grant or in the General Fund, you have an APC rate, and that's part of that rate to replenish the fund.
Does anybody else get, I'm not sure I get that up, but I'm not gonna take up time.
Yeah, to expand upon that, so the General Fund is really the only fund that we have any control over, so to speak. Grant money is grant money, and it's earmarked, so why would we ever want to move anything out of, I mean, we would want to move, we would want to have more control over everything, more things in the General Fund? Does that make any sense?
Yes, and actually, what I would say is, the funds that are established outside of the General Fund are either restricted, committed, or assigned. And a great example of a restricted fund would be the Title Funds. They're federal money, and they have requirements that we have to meet for the use of the funds. The Bond is another restricted fund. You know, there are only certain things we can do with it based on the bond title. Other funds are committed or assigned either at the board level or at the district level. But the purpose is that there's a reason to have the funds outside of the General Fund, and so we can establish those funds for those purposes.
But, back to my question, but in general, it's the money that comes in from the state in property taxes that refills them every year so that we can continue to pay those four people?
For Risk Man, or for the Risk Management Fund, yes, but not for other funds. Yeah, I mean, we have the depreciation schedule.
The money comes from someplace to go back in and refill them, that's all I'm trying to get to.
Mm-hmm.
Lloyd?
Is this on? Yeah. So, for instance, on the, if we set up a deferred maintenance fund, then it will generally be General Fund money that will be directed to that fund in order to provide the money for that fund?
It could be General Fund money, it could also be through the sale of assets, surplus, other equipment, material. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be just General Fund. Okay.
So I believe the next item I'd like to visit with the Budget Committee about is the May Adjustment. As we discussed in the April 22nd Budget Message, it is common and customary in the state of Oregon for districts to generally receive either an asset or a liability relative to the May Adjustment. And the May Adjustment calculates district enrollment and teacher experience factors over the state, and then determines whether a state, a school district is entitled to additional funds. So our estimate for the May Adjustment is $5 million. Of that $5 million, we are recommending that 2.5 of that be used in the ending fund balance for the 2014-15 school year. The other 2.5 million, we are recommending be considered for infrastructure. And as you recall from the Superintendent Budget Message, most all of the supports that we talked about were classroom-driven supports. And I remember Director Brantley saying, so what about infrastructure, like technology, like replacement of equipment? So in general, for the May Adjustment, we're recommending that 50% of that, or 2.5 million, be dedicated to these, the following areas. 1.1 million for technology, and that would include replacement of aging and aging equipment, as well as completing base packages of equipment for classroom teachers, also installing wireless infrastructure where we need to. We're also proposing $600,000 to the Capital Projects Fund that would address the temperature issues we have in some, several of our computer labs. We need to get our computer labs up to par for the new state assessment. In addition to that, we would want to dedicate some of those funds to mounting some of the projectors that we have, dedicated for teacher use in all of our classrooms. Currently, it's a safety hazard to have many of these projectors not out of the way. In addition to that, we're looking at a half a million dollars to be dedicated to Capital Projects Fund, or, excuse me, Capital Maintenance, and that would include what Mike discussed in terms of deferred maintenance and also preventative maintenance. And then a $300,000 allocation recommendation for vehicles in the Asset Replacement Fund, and these would be such vehicles as activity vans and support, and also some support equipment. So the total of that amount is 2.5 million. If you, if you look at that compared to the 9.9 million we're talking about for classroom, we're trying to present the Budget Committee and the community with somewhat of a balanced approach to this budget, using a portion of the May Adjustment to invest in our infrastructure so we don't get behind in maintenance, in particular preventative and deferred maintenance, and also address some much-needed areas of technology, as well as some of the vehicle replacement that has not been able to be replaced. We've had some, a couple of questions relative to buses, and the bus allocation we are recommending would come out of the depreciation fund and not out of either the May Adjustment or the General Fund. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have relative to the May Adjustment.
Jeff?
The 2.5 million ending fund balance addition, is that in addition to the 5% to 7% that we were shooting for, or is that part of the 5% to 7% that we were shooting for, that we were given at the last meeting?
It's the part of the 5% to 7% that we talked about.
Okay. And last time, you said that 2 million was a very conservative number, but you hadn't come up with the estimate. Do you feel like 5 million is a pretty accurate number, or do you feel like that's still conservative?
I'll have Mike respond to that.
Okay. There's, there may be two conversations going on. There's the 2 million May Adjustment that was, that's in the proposed budget for 1415. That's next year's May Adjustment. There's the 5 million for this year, and we had anticipated 2.5 as part of our ending fund balance, which is what we rolled into the beginning fund balance for 1415 proposed budget. So the 2.5 that Paula's talking about is above what we had already anticipated.
Okay.
Mark?
I have a, I have a question about deferred maintenance, and I've had some conversations with Mike and Paula about this, and I'll take your lead on whether now's the time to get more into that, or when we get into the rest of the budget conversation and questions.
I guess it would depend on, can you give us an example of your question, then we probably have a better idea of what, whether to defer it or to respond now?
What I'd like to talk about is getting a sense for, on deferred maintenance particularly, the ideal is that we have a, you know, on maintenance and sort of cyclical replacements, you have a multi-year plan, and you say, we're gonna do X percent of the total plan and need in a category each year, so that you cycle through it over time. We have not done that in a number of categories for a number of years. So my question is, how far behind are we in order to catch up so that we could resume a standard cyclical kind of approach? And so I understand and appreciate that this May Adjustment, we're putting some money into that, but does that catch us up? How, if it doesn't, how far behind are we still before we can actually say, okay, we can now be back in a standard, regular pattern and cycle in all of those categories?
Mike, is that something you can answer?
I can begin. I think it's a very good question, and it's a broad question that really, I think, hits at the heart of the infrastructure reports, which are actually part of the attachments that we've included. And so we know, based on the infrastructure reports that we produced last year, that, for instance, we're far behind a replacement cycle for technology. We're far behind a replacement cycle for buses, for instance, vehicles and critical equipment. We're also making progress in the instructional material area this year, but we're certainly not where we would like to be. So I think it's fair to say, across the board, Mark, we're not close on any category for, you know, to be in the replacement cycle that we would have liked to have been in had the 2008 recession not hit. Now, I can't give you a specific answer today about what the makeup or the gap would be in each area, but we're beginning to position for reinvestment, and that's part of what the asset replacement restructuring does for us, and we're very, very hopeful, cautiously optimistic, I would say, that the 1517 biennium will continue to be a reinvestment at the state level. And if that continues, then we'll have much more detail about the reinvestment in those critical areas. But I think it's an ongoing conversation, and we can certainly do more work in that area.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think for now, for me, for consideration of this budget, I understand we don't yet have all those answers. It is something that I'd like us to have a conversation about as a committee, looking forward to know on a more multi-year kind of basis, what's the plan to sort of get us back? And I understand part of that depends on revenue availability, but there are some trade-offs in decisions, and at some point, it costs more if we continue deferring. So I'd like us to maybe put that into a plan for a conversation after we've gotten through this budget and gotten this adopted as we begin to look into future years.
Got it. And as far as where we stood on some of those items, last year, we had a report from the different departments, which is part of your handouts. I don't know if you've had a chance to read through that, but you'll see the backlog of technology and fleet and those kind of things. It's very well laid out. At this point, yeah, we will defer that until, into the future, but it is something that we can decide if the, if the committee has enough interest that it's something we want to pursue. Is that, okay, Mark, you good?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Susan?
I noticed, and I understand this is, we're building back slowly, and we're building back the things that we have let go for a long time. But one of the things that concerned me is looking over the budget line items in the, well, it's in the elementary schools, but it's not in the middle or the high schools, was looking to replace library materials, especially now that the benchmarks are looking at especially a lot of nonfiction. And it's, there is no budget in the elementary schools. It's a line item, but there's nothing budgeted for this year, and I can understand that. But in the other ones, it's not even there, and I guess my concern is, when a line item is taken out, it kind of gets like out of sight, out of mind, and we sort of never think about it again.
Okay.
And I think, even if it's a zero, I think the line should still be there as money comes in, as we are able to add more into our infrastructure to look at restoring into our school libraries, especially in nonfiction areas.
Okay, Susan, that would be in the next meeting, so after we have public testimony, at that point, more specific about a line item that you might be interested in, more versus tonight, which is more discussion about what, just general discussion, and then, so after we hear public testimony, we can be more specific about line items and bringing that up and deciding whether or not we want to act upon it.
Okay.
And if I could just, Susan, I just wanted to make sure that you were looking in the instructional support area as well, and we'll carry the conversation forward.
Yeah, I was looking in, well, I was looking in Special Revenue Funds too, and I did notice some there.
Okay.
For co-curricular activities, but I, part of me says, how does that get into a third grade?
Sure, sure, yeah. Around page 120, just for future reference to help with the conversation, you'll see some investments in library media.
Anyone else? Yes, Lloyd?
I was just looking at the Bond Capital Projects Fund. And we have a projected expenditure, if I'm reading it correctly, of about $27 million. It seems to me, and that's on page 298, that in, when, in the past, when we have used that extensively for technology, I'm wondering if, what, if there's more description about how that money is to be spent?
Okay, well, let me sort of reframe the use of the funds. The use of the fund is for the repair renovation and building of new schools. So we built four new schools, and when we built those schools, part of the capital investment was technology. So you can look back in the previous years and see that on the technology piece, software and hardware, we actually spent quite a bit, but that was for the four new schools. The rest of the funds are, that are remaining, are for repair and renovation of the existing schools, not for technology.
At Morningside School, there was a renovation project, which include floors and ceiling and stuff, and I thought it included technology enhancements. Is that probably not correct?
Well, what we can do as we package these projects is it's more efficient, since we've got the ceilings ripped out, to maybe make a technology investment, but it's not out of this fund.
It's not out of this fund.
Yeah, it would be out of Technology or the General Fund in particular. Yeah. So you may have seen some work, but it wasn't the Capital Projects Bond Fund.
I guess I had the impression from other places that if it had more than a five-year, five-year or more life, it could be funded from a, from a bond project.
Actually, it's one year.
It's one year.
Yeah, since Measure 68 was passed. However, our bond title is very specific on what we can do, and it's not to replace technology.
Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Radic?
Yes, I think we'll go ahead and move on to some of the questions that were received and some discussion, and I think Mike's prepared to address those.
Yeah, that's a good segue to the, well, you have three documents, and so let me make sure that we're gonna start on the same one, and that's a response to Budget Committee question from Chris Brantley. And Chris, this helped us frame up the whole asset replacement and the May Adjustment allocation conversation, so what, thank you for that. What I wanted to do was, you asked the question, how does the 2014-15 proposed budget address the infrastructure needs outlined in the reports the Budget Committee received last year? We just happen to have those reports attached. And essentially, what I'd like to do is talk about each of those areas and how the General Fund allocation and the May Adjustment allocation address each of those. Okay? So if we start with instructional material- So if we start with instructional materials, we've talked about the 2.5, approximately 2.5 million from the 9.9 that we're allocating into instructional materials. So again, that helps move the dial in that area. And we have, the content area that you see in the matrix is social studies, math, language arts, science, and talented and gifted. And you see the grade levels that we're focusing on there. The human capital.
Could I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So two and a half million dollars isn't enough to do a full adoption in each of those areas? So this is just simply, they've identified some high priority needs and you're filling some needs? Is that true?
Yeah, the highest priority needs, yeah, in each of those areas. And then on the human capital, the proposed general fund maintains current professional development programs and adds 5.5 FTE for effective learning teachers. This is one of the models that we use for embedded staff development. And that's, that was actually, you can tie that number directly to superintendent's budget message. So that's a little over $400,000. And additionally, to help expedite the hiring process for hard-to-fill positions and to expedite the regular classroom teachers recruitment, we also allocated a little over $60,000 to get some additional staff to help with that. So you can see the investment back into human capital for this budget cycle is about $470,000. Not as much as we would like, but.
Start.
Technology, again, this is the 1.1 million that Paula talked about in the proposed May adjustment, 2.5 million that we'd like to allocate into technology, but into the asset replacement fund. So that that fund, any unspent resources roll forward. They don't zero out into the ending fund balance. So that's one of the reasons, to begin to create some level or sense of sustainability, even though it's not much, it helps us move in that direction. There's also, you may remember, two years ago, that we had, we were facing a $20 million deficit. And the budget committee felt that an additional investment in technology as an ongoing roll forward of $500,000 was appropriate. So that's still in the technology budget. I wouldn't call it new, because it's not, but it's still there. And what we're really focused on is the potential allocation of the 1.1 million that Paula talked about for technology. Okay? Facilities, again, we are adding in our proposed budget $250,000 from the general fund to address deferred and preventative maintenance issues. But we're also suggesting the 1.1 million from the 2.5 May adjustment allocation. And again, that 1.1 is broken up into $600,000 investment for new AC in our labs. We've done a great job, technology's done a phenomenal job upgrading our labs district-wide in preparation for S-PAC. But they're not, it's not going to do a whole lot of good if it's 100 degrees in a lab during testing day. So we really want to get ahead of it. That's what $600,000 will go towards, plus the, as Paula had said, the mounting of our projectors as well. And then $500,000 will go towards the capital maintenance deferred and preventative projects. And then fleet, again, our infrastructure report outlines that currently, we're operating 50 buses that exceed the targeted replacement. And there's about another 54 heading in that direction. That, they don't all hit that market on the same day. So throughout this next year, that 54 will be incrementally added to the 50 that are already exceeding the replacement schedule. And as Paula said, we've, even though we've had a little bit of funds in the asset replacement for buses based on the depreciation schedule, we haven't been in a position as a district for the past five years to really expend those funds. We've been in a significant cut mode. So this year, 14, 15, we're going to fully utilize those resources. But we're not adding for buses. What we are adding is $300,000 for support vehicles, to include activity vans and others, support trucks and vans, delivery vehicles. We have significant issues with some of our refrigerated vehicles that we would sure like to get fixed. And that's kind of, in general, how we are answering your question, Chris. And also, for the benefit of the budget committee, how we propose to allocate the May adjustment.
Nancy?
I just have a question about facilities. The bond was specific to school buildings. And the district owns buildings like the Paula Center, the administrative offices on Lancaster, the bus barn. Is there any plan in terms of working toward renovating any of those with money other than the bond?
Yes, and some of what's already in the general fund is $500,000 that's in the general fund for all work in the district. But that includes support work. So that's, the focus has essentially been on support buildings with the $500,000. And the additional $250,000 that we're allocating from the general fund, that will put us at about three-quarters of a million dollars. But that helps us do things like resurface middle school tracks as well. You know, the issues that the bond just doesn't allow us to deal with, all of, this fund allows us to at least begin to address some of those most critical issues, non-school issues or school issues that are not within the building itself.
Thank you.
Because the bond was specifically for school-related, not for support.
And support.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
Okay. And then, the next series of questions, the next document, is questions from Lloyd and Mark. So we'll start from, with the questions that Lloyd sent in April 24th and go through them briefly. And Lloyd, if there are any that you'd like to highlight, please feel free to do so. And same with you, Mark, as we go through them. So Lloyd, you had asked specifically about professional development in object code 240 under associated payroll costs, and it is linked to the bargaining agreements. And so for licensed staff, in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, the district provides tuition professional development up to $1,000 per member, up to $138,000. There are also funds available for training through professional organizations and tuition reimbursement for maintaining licensees at the administrative level. And facilitators for staff development may also be paid from this account. Classified staff may attend training funded by these accounts as well. The, you asked a question about the 1112 high-cost disability revenue on page 86. The high-cost disability grant is $18 million per year, which is not anywhere near enough statewide. All districts throughout Oregon share a portion of this grant, based on expenditures for special education students that exceed $30,000. Though by definition, that's our high-cost disability students. The amounts distributed are computed by ODE. From year to year, the amounts received differ based on the amounts for reimbursement submitted by each school. So again, the $18 million, how it gets allocated out depends on the demand for it. Currently, the current reimbursement rate is about 42 cents on the dollar, above $30,000. And so even when our costs go up, we may still receive a lower distribution amount, depending on what is happening throughout the other districts.
If I, can I paraphrase what I think you just said and make sure I understand it? So we get about, we get a double weight for those students just because they're special ed. So we get about $10,000 per kid in special ed.
Well, maybe 13. I mean, it's 6,500 times two.
Capped at 11%.
I'm doing this in big round numbers.
But it is capped at 11%.
Right. And then, we get reimbursed for over $30,000, but we only get 42% of whatever's over there, at the current reimbursement rate. So if we have a kid that costs $50,000, we're getting about $10,000 extra dollars over the $10,000. So we're getting about $20,000 on a $50,000 kid.
Your math is pretty quick, but I'll assume that that's correct. I think the issue is, I think the issue is that there's what's called a doughnut hole. The, you know, there's a, even with the double weight and the cap, then the $30,000 kicks in. So there's a gap right there, and we're not recouping 100% of the high-cost disability.
So being one of the districts in the state that gets a lot of those kids because of our state system, we probably are a little bit behind other districts in that regard. True?
I think all districts that are similar demographics to us with the special ed population are feeling the same financial issues that we are. Yeah.
I think there have been discussions, though, Chris, relative to looking at this part of the funding formula. Because as you are aware, districts are experiencing very significant, Susan, with very significant disabilities and extreme cost. So I think, and I know Mike is on a state committee looking at this as a possible consideration for the future.
Okay. Question three, how do tuition, yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't think you need to go, these are fairly detailed questions, more from my understanding than if, I don't think it's crucial to go through them individually.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything. And Mark?
I would say the same thing. I mean, the thing I was most interested in was the deferred maintenance conversation. And we've already touched on that and went into it more based on Chris's questions. So I don't feel the need to go through these individually.
Okay. Well, then, let's consider this reference material for the budget committee. And if you have any questions about the questions, you can certainly send them my way. And that would also, Lloyd, your, the second set of questions that you asked, would you want to go over those or any one of those in particular?
I would like some, so just in general, the grant, the effective learning teachers in the general fund are unrelated to the educator effectiveness under the grant section.
Yeah, the educator effectiveness is a specific grant to help with, well, it's going to sound circular, but.
Just to help with educator effectiveness.
Educator effectiveness. But it's also the.
I experienced some confusion there.
Yeah, I know. Let me see if I can help. It's also, it's the professional development in support of the Common Core state standards. So that's the real big push and emphasis this next year.
And that's the grant?
That is, that is the educator effectiveness grant.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And then, I guess the other question I had, an addition in the grant section of 10 FTE in instructional staff development, which is on page 257 of the budget.
Well, let's do that.
Is this, is this part of your questions or these are new questions?
The, I sent, I had, my email had included additional questions and were answered in this.
On this other piece?
On this, on this one page.
Okay. And Lloyd, could you restate your question, please?
If you look on, in the grants, under, on page, actually, it's 256.
Okay.
The instructional staff development increases from 44 licensed in the current year to 53.14 in the following year, an addition of nine licensed staff. And I was wondering what that reflected.
Mm-hmm, okay. And I'm sorry I missed that in your email. I didn't, but we'll get that answer to you specifically.
Okay.
Okay, and so we really, first of all, thank you for the questions, number one. It helps get everything moving as far as the analysis of the budget document. I really appreciate that. And part of all of this is to help the budget committee prepare for the deliberations and conversations that will happen in two weeks. So I would say, what we tried to do is give you an overview of the major changes within the budget, not just the general fund, but also the other funds. And we talked about some changes that aren't in the budget that will be hand-carried to you on May 19th. And that will reflect our proposed allocation from the May adjustment. So we gave you kind of the general overview of what our proposal is for that 2.5 million. We'll follow up with documentation that will be inserts for your proposed budget. Okay?
Okay, Lloyd?
So when you do that, we have a, we have a proposed column in this budget. Would, would those changes show up in what is approved? Or would they, do they change what's proposed?
They'll be part of the changed proposed budget. And then, when you approve the budget, in whatever configuration you do that in, that, everything that you approve will slide to the right in the approved column.
Okay, are there any other information requests at this point for the district? Okay, in that case, let's talk about the next, the meeting schedule, what will happen. Our next meeting is, starts Monday, May 19th. That is when we will hear public testimony. Yes, Jim?
I'm sorry, I did have a discussion item.
Go ahead.
Mike, can you remind me, when we were talking about instructional materials earlier, didn't the board take like $235,000 out of contingency this year?
300.
To do a curriculum, I mean, curriculum program? Because we needed instructional materials for Common Core for this year, didn't we?
300,000, yes. And it was, now, remember, when we talk about instructional materials, we have to talk about the professional development that goes with it.
Sure.
And that was all part of the 300,000.
But we took it out of contingency as a board back in January? No, November?
I think it was in.
But we did it just last year, yeah.
So for '13, '14, not for proposed, okay.
We had to go into the contingency in order to meet that need.
That's correct.
Right.
Yep, thanks, Jim.
Anyone else? So we will meet here on May 19th. We will hear public testimony. After that, we will deliberate for however long it takes. We will hear public testimony again on Tuesday, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes. And then, again, if needed, after those first two days, we will have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday also available, depending on when the, when we as a committee decide to approve the budget.
Not Friday.
Wednesday and Thursday, sorry. Now Friday, Fridays are happy hour day. Okay, any other, yes, Rick?
On the meeting dates that are coming up to recap, we're going to meet definitely on the 19th and 20th. So if no one shows up on the 19th to talk to us, we're going to be here again on the 20th, three gardens, right?
That is correct.
Two days we've set aside for sure.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes, I mean, unless, what if the committee reaches an agreement on Monday? Do we have to meet on Tuesday?
Yeah, we've scheduled two public testimony.
Okay, because of the public, yes, okay. So we have to show up on Tuesday in case there's additional public testimony, correct? Okay, anyone else? We are adjourned. Go Blazers!